I call the Wheat Ridge Plan to order and ask for a roll call of the members.
Ann Brinkman.
President.
Ellen Bucknam.
Present.
Mark Dietrich.
Present.
John Dwyer is absent this evening. Dean Goke is absent this evening. Dick Matthews.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
And Steve Tims is absent.
The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for the -- to approve the order of the agenda.
I'd like to add something to the agenda. Discussion about Dean Goke and filling the position, what the status is of that.
You would like to add?
Add it at the end, under other items.
Under other items?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that we're not so shy of folks.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Is there a second for the amended agenda?
I'll second it.
Ask for a poll of the members.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the September 2, 2010 meeting.
I approve the minutes of September 2, 2010.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Call for the vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Now is the time for the public forum, and that's a time for any person to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda. If you want to speak on the item that's on our agenda tonight, we'll wait for the public hearing on that. Is there anybody that wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? There is no one to speak at the public forum, and that takes us to the public hearing. Hereby open the public hearing on case number WZ-10-07, a proposed city-initiated rezoning to the mixed-use commercial MU-C Zone District for properties located at 4350 Wadsworth Boulevard, 4540 West 44th Avenue, and 7430 West 44th Avenue. And ask for a staff presentation.
I'm here to present case number WZ-10-07 concerning a city-initiated rezoning for properties located at the southeast corner of Wadsworth and West 44th Avenue from Zone Districts RC, C1, and PCD to mixed-use commercial. And I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, the case file, and the contents of this digital presentation. So we will begin by looking at some aerial photograph and then photographs of the property that's proposed for rezoning. You can see in this aerial red dash line outlines the border of the area that's being proposed to be rezoned to mixed-use commercial. This is Wadsworth here on the west side bordering the properties. West 44th Avenue to the north and Uppam Street over here on the eastern boundary. To familiarize people a little bit, the site, there's quite a large vacant lot and parking area. The former antique mall is located here. There's a vacant transmission shop on the corner with Uppam. And the area also includes a restaurant called The Panda King here and a office building and parking owned by First Bank. These are some photographs of the area. This captures part of the vacant lot as well as the former antique mall. This is looking, standing on the west side and looking towards the east. This is towards the north end of the property near West 44th, looking towards the intersection of 44th and Uppam Street. And you can see the old transmission shop there on the right-hand side of the photograph. This is looking back again at the antique mall, only this time from the east side looking towards the west. And this is the view of the antique mall from Uppam Street. And this is looking south down Uppam to get a sense of the character of that street where it borders the site. In this photograph, the site is immediately to the right. And as I mentioned, the area also includes this office building that's at the corner of 44th and Wadsworth. This map illustrates what the existing zoning on the property is. It's all commercial zoning. There's three different zoning zone districts here. We have restricted commercial or RC, which is this orange here. The red color that you see covers a lot of Wadsworth and West 44th as well as the middle of the site. And the corner here is C1 or Commercial 1. And then there's in this gray color, a planned commercial development or PCD that was approved in 1977. And just a quick overview, the Commercial 1 district allows for a pretty wide range of commercial land uses. Commercial buildings can go up to a maximum of 50 feet, and there's pretty limited allowances for any kind of residential use. Restricted commercial is very similar to C1, only there's some more restrictions on the type of commercial use is allowed. It's more geared towards small-scale retail neighborhood-oriented uses as well as office. And the planned commercial development or PCD that was, we saw on the map, is on the east side of the property. It's called the Pay and Pack PCD, and as I mentioned before, is approved in 1977. It essentially allows the same uses as the C1 Zone District. The only difference is that it specifically precludes auto truck or trailer sales. The zoning that's being proposed for this area is a relatively new zone district called Mixed Use Commercial. The city's envisioning it for this site because it fits with plans for the Wadsworth Corridor that have been in place for quite a few years. The Wadsworth Corridor Subarea Plan was adopted in 2007, and it calls for medium-to-high-density mixed-use development on the Wadsworth Corridor roughly between 38th and 44th, focusing in particular in trying to create a mixed-use town center in that area. And that vision was refined a bit in the comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge, which was adopted in 2009, about a year ago. There's a lot of community engagement through that plan and buy-in on the concept of having a mixed-use, medium-to-high-density town center in Wadsworth with high, real emphasis on high-quality development. And specifically, the comprehensive plan identified this area of Wadsworth between 44th and 38th as one of five priority redevelopment areas in the city, and did recommend adopting mixed-use zoning that could be utilized on the corridor to encourage mixed-use development. And these are graphics from the two plans I just mentioned. On the left over here is from the Wadsworth Subarea Plan, and there's this diagonal red and orange color. This is the site roughly that we're looking at rezoning here. And that diagonal, you can see on the legend down here, stands for medium-to-high-density mixed-use land use. And then the map on the right is from the comprehensive plan. And this area here between, Wadsworth between 44th and 38th is designated as the mixed-use town center, as I mentioned previously. To give a sense of what the proposed zoning would allow for future development on this site, in terms of land uses, it does have quite a range of commercial and residential uses. There are certain uses that are expressly not allowed. Those include any kind of car sales or repair that have overnight outdoor display, adult entertainment, and pawnbrokers are some examples. There's also quite a few conditional uses which require an additional administrative process because they tend to have an auto-oriented component or something that staff will be looking for additional site design so that it fits in with the vision for this area. And those include any kind of drive-through use, gas stations, wholesale are some examples of conditional uses in this district. In terms of building height, if you're a single-use building, so strict all-commercial, for example, just an office building can only go up to four stories. However, if the building is mixed-use, so if it had retail at the ground floor and office above, or retail at the ground floor and residential above, it could go up to six stories. However, no matter what type of building it is, if it's within 100 feet of an existing single- or two-family home, the maximum height is four stories. So that would apply for any part of the site that's close to some of the homes near Uppam And we do recognize that that transition to the residential existing neighborhood is important, and the proposed zoning does include some requirements for transitions and buffering when adjacent to residential uses. Any residentially-zoned lot that abuts new development under the MUC district, if there's a parking lot or drive-through use next to that lot, there are landscaping requirements, including solid wall or fence as well as a six-foot-wide landscape buffer. And then in terms of the architecture and massing of buildings as they abut existing residential, there is a requirement, first of all, at the ground level to have a landscape buffer of a minimum of 10 feet for a one-to-two-story building, 15 feet for a three-story building, and then 20 feet for four stories and higher. And that's at the ground level, and it is required to be landscaped with trees or shrubs. Then, as you, if the building is over two stories, as you move up, there's an additional five-foot per-story step back until you reach the fourth story. Another big component of the mixed-use commercial district is architectural and site design standards. These are there to try and ensure quality development and that we'll end up with buildings and a sense of place for kind of development that would be under this district. Some example of the standards that are there to help encourage the kind of quality buildings are ground floor transparency requirements or windows at the ground floor, build-to requirements, which encourage pushing the building towards the street and putting parking behind the building, requirements for allowable materials as well as variation in material, variation in the facade itself so that it's not just a flat, blank wall, and requirements for screening, landscape screening of parking lots and drive-through uses. Part of the process for the city-initiated rezoning is to hold a neighborhood meeting. Anybody within 600 feet of the area proposed to be rezoned is invited. We held that meeting on October 13 and had 11 attendees as well as a few staff members. There was a lot of discussion about a lot of topics. There are notes from that meeting in your packet. But probably the biggest issue that came up in terms of concern was that the area that's vacant right now and that contains the antique mall is part of, is owned by Renewal Wheat Ridge and is part of a development plan that they're working with a master developer on. Nothing is finalized at this point, but it has been in the newspapers and talked about that certainly one of the components they're looking at is to include housing, and that part of that housing could definitely have what they're calling more workforce housing. So more likely moderate income, but low to moderate income would be a component of the overall housing potentially. So that came up as a big concern from some of the attendees at the meeting. This chart just shows the steps that are part of the city-initiated rezoning. It started when city council adopted a resolution to move forward with zoning these properties in September. And then we, the next step is the neighborhood meeting, which I just discussed we had in October. And now we're at the first public hearing before Planning Commission, and there also is a public hearing required before city council. And the property owners that are being rezoned do receive a certified letter before each public hearing, and they are well aware of what we're proposing. So in summary, staff does support, recommend the rezoning to the mixed-use commercial district in terms of the criteria that Planning Commission is required to evaluate for a proposed rezoning. I do think there's been changes in the area since the existing zoning was put in place as far back as the early 1980s when there was an urban renewal plan for Wadsworth adopted, which has been amended several times. And then, of course, we've had other planning documents after that. Another big change is this, that the land has become kind of slowly deteriorated. There's been more vacant uses and now a large vacant lot, and it's been a blighted area for quite some time in the city. The proposed change of zone is compatible with the surrounding area. It's on two large commercial corridors, Wadsworth and West 44th, that already allow for pretty intense commercial uses and buildings up to five stories. And it does, as I walk through, also include the kind of transitions we want to see when you have a commercial or mixed-use development adjacent to an existing residential neighborhood. Definitely foresee economic benefits with the zone change. It should enable redevelopment of this parcel, including commercial land uses that are proposed that will, should bring a lot of people to Wheat Ridge, generate a lot of activity, contribute to the city's sales tax. So some good economic benefits, but other benefits as well, including there are open space requirements as part of the zoning. So any kind of development is going to have to provide quality open space as well as new streets that will have to meet our standards for streetscaping and be pedestrian-oriented with nice amenities. In terms of infrastructure and traffic improvements, as part of the site plan review process, which is required in the mixed-use commercial district, there will be a traffic study required through Public Works, and all of the utility districts will be put on referral. And in order to have the site plan review process complete, the proposal would need to meet any infrastructure improvement requirements. There should be no adverse effect on the public health or safety, and the zone change fits very nicely with the city's adopted plans for this area and help it come into compliance with the vision for creating a mixed-use town center in this area. So that's the end of my presentation. Can answer questions an hour later.
Do we have questions for staff?
I have one.
Sure.
Is there anything statutory that the city has to do or the landowner has to do prior to changing of the mix, changing the zone, zoning? So, for example, does there have to be an EPA report on any of the land if it was a brownfield of any sort, or?
No, the only real statutory requirements for city-initiated rezoning are around noticing and having a neighborhood meeting, and that's it.
And then my only other question is, did the landowner to the southwest choose not to be part of this rezoning effort?
No, actually, that was a decision when city council adopted their resolution for which area to rezone. I think you're talking about this?
Yes.
Parcel here. Ultimately, they, that was certainly on the table, but decided to go with not including it for now because all of the parcels that are included are in some way impacted by the proposed redevelopment of this area by Renewal Wheat Ridge in terms of street connections, and First Bank will probably be sharing some of their parking area with the proposed new development. And also part of the reason why to leave it out is because we are moving forward. We actually have a meeting next week with all property owners on Wadsworth between 44th and 38th to look at a more comprehensive rezoning. So city council decided to include that little piece as part of that effort and focus this rezoning on more, a little more specifically to just the redevelopment area.
Okay. And then, I lost the page. Within the packet, there on page 11, I'm just trying to understand what that sliver is in the middle. Sorry, I'm just gonna find it. It's on page, I'm sorry, exhibit two, legal description and map.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not sure why there's such a tiny little parcel there. It is part of the same ownership and has the same address, so it's not right-of-way or, you know, it is private and under their control. But I do not know why it looks like that.
Okay, thank you.
My one question is, what is the process after we vote tonight before there would be a groundbreaking over there? What additional steps will be taken?
Sure. Well, quite a few really, because there's, there really are initial phases, renewal Wheat Ridge's in terms of finalizing a development plan. But especially from the city's perspective, the next first big step obviously would be to have a public hearing before city council to finally, to finalize the rezoning. Then, once the zoning is in place, any proposed development is going to have to go through our site plan review process, which would require submittal of a site plan, architectural drawings for any proposed buildings, and a landscape plan that staff would then review and comment on to make sure every piece of the code is being met. Another, so that's one step that have to be completed. Another big step is the subdivision or replat because, as you can see on the map, especially that legal description, there's quite a few lots here. So, and another reason why that's required is the proposal is to connect some of the street grid, so there will be public right-of-way dedication. So that piece would also have to be complete before any real development would occur. And then, of course, they'd also have to obtain building permits through our building division to make sure everything's compliant with the building code. So there could be some kind of groundbreaking in terms of some demolition, or some of the infrastructure could potentially be built prior to the buildings getting permitted. But the site plan review process would certainly have to happen even before infrastructure.
Is the subdivision a major or a minor? Will it come through us as well as city council, or just us?
I believe it's going to require, I believe there will be enough lots that it's going to require going to city council, but I, because the development area is still kind of, the plan is still being worked out, I don't know that for sure.
I just have one other question. So I was reading over the neighborhood meeting notes.
Yes.
And did the neighborhood see anything other than this very blank slate? Did they see, because one of the questions leads me to believe that they saw something other than what's presented in front of us.
Yes. We, because the, because the case is about a rezoning and not a specific development proposal, and because any development proposal, proposal right now is not finalized, we did not initially include any kind of site plan or proposal as part of the presentation. However, a lot of people, in fact, there was somebody even there that had a copy of a concept plan that was at one of the urban renewal meetings, and people have read about it in the paper and kind of familiar, knowing that there was a site plan. So we did end up pulling that up on the screen because it made it much easier when people are asking questions to be able to show, for example, on that site plan where some of the streets are. And I have it with me tonight, but we just, as I mentioned at the beginning, the case is about a rezoning and not the development proposal.
Yeah, and I'm fine not seeing that. I just was wondering because?
Yeah.
Clearly, they were, they were a step ahead of us as far as what they were talking about at one point. Okay.
Yeah, they've done their homework.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, at one time, there was like a four- or five-year-old site plan. Is that that old stale site plan that?
Yeah, that came up in the meeting too because there had been a couple neighborhood members that were involved in the process that was done, yeah, four or five years ago, and that was actually through Wheat Ridge 2020. They had hired somebody to look at the, a concept plan, which the renewal, or Wheat Ridge 2020 actually put out in an RFP to try and get some development going, and only one person responded and it had one developer, and it ended up not going anywhere. So for the past four years, it's essentially been unutilized.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the part of the meeting where we ask for testimony from the public. So if you can come forward and state your name and spell your last name for the record, we would love to hear what the general public has to say about the proposed rezoning.
I'm not a very eloquent person, and I've never done this before, but I'll do my best.
Be careful, if the microphone's not adjusted right, the lady in the back room will come running out saying you're not being broadcast. That's the important thing, is to get it broadcast.
All right. Is this okay?
Sure.
Okay, my name is Joseph Sadar, S-A-D-A-R is the last name, and I live on Teller Street at Third House Up, from the third house south of 44th. My question would be, the economic benefits that the lady stated for Wheat Ridge are not necessarily economic benefits for the people in the community, as far as I can see it, as far as what this may do to property values for those of us that live close or in the general area of this proposed development. So that was one thing that I might want to say. And the second thing was that, as far as the lady said that there would be no, how do I want to say this? No detrimental effect on public safety, and I kind of have to disagree because of the fact- because of the fact that the Wheat Ridge Fire Department, we all know where it is and how many runs they make going north on Uppam Street every day. And according to this plan, it looks to me like there was going to be parking right at Uppam Street between the proposed housing and the street itself. So, and if this is housing with a lot of children, et cetera, around, I don't say that that is very safe in, in a lot of different ways. And so, if, I don't know, if anybody could explain or help me with any of that, I'd, I'd be, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, is there anything that you can do to address the economic benefits of, of that zoning?
Sure. I mean, it'll be pretty similar to what I said in the presentation in terms of, right now, this is largely vacant land that with the existing zoning and has been vacant for several years, even though it's in one of our few kind of major commercial areas. So by allowing this new zoning to go into place, which we hope will enable redevelopment to occur, we do expect to see not only an increase in tax revenues, but creating a quality place, enhancing the image of Wheat Ridge. And I definitely hear your concern about living nearby and the potential impacts, but I would point out that there, there could be development under the existing zoning that would be pretty intensive commercial use, that could also have, could potentially have impacts on neighboring properties. And the vision certainly in this, the proposed zoning, especially with the architectural requirements, and requirements for quality, open space, and nice streets, is to actually create an amenity here and a place that people will want to go and could potentially improve property values in the area rather than detract from them.
Okay, thank you. If there is no one else to speak before us then, would you like to, yep, come on up and state your name and spell your last name for the record?
It's Mike Markham, M-A-R-K-H-A-M. And I would just like to ask a point of clarification on notification to the adjacent property owners.
I believe you stated there would be certified letters.
I'm sorry, that was a misunderstood. Those letters go to the properties being rezoned.
Oh, okay. Not to the, to the adjacent owners?
Correct, yeah, we're, per the adopted code, the only people that are notified are those being rezoned.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can I clarify? No, I wanted to just clarify something. You had asked about the, the parking structure? Right now, we're not addressing any type of parking structure at all. We're talking only about the zoning of the property, okay? So.
If I may. If I may, the only reason I brought that up is that on the picture up here, there were, it showed that in one of the, in one of the things that the lady showed. In other words, it showed parking spaces, and then a sidewalk in this buffer zone, et cetera, and then a building, or a wall, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was just a.
It was an architectural.
Yeah, that was just an example graphic to illustrate what, how a screening would look, but it's not actually proposed for this site.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. We, sometimes we need pictures to help us along. That's, yeah, that's why they gave it to us.
And sometimes those pictures get changed during the process, too. Yeah. Are, anyone else to speak to the commission? Okay, I will close the public hearing then and ask for a discussion amongst the commissioners.